I think we're opted out by the Board of Selectmen, so I don't think we are live or taped. Do you would like to believe this?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next up, an invitation to speech, to speak. Next up is the superintendent's report.
Okay, and Dr. Schubert, I just want to let you know that a slight correction that we are live for our voice feed, not for our picture feed. That's why we're being taped. So, people can listen to us tonight but not see us. All right, the first thing on our agenda tonight is the field trip to New Hampshire through the music department. Mrs. Stephanie Moriarty is here to talk about the trip, which is an exciting adventure. So if you want to come up, maybe grab that seat there. We'll put you in that middle one, and you can talk to everybody about this. This is really cool.
It's really cool. As she said to Mrs. McGoldrick, it's hard to not use just a plethora of adjectives, because it's really cool. So I was contacted by the Director of Wind Bands at University of New Hampshire, which is my alma mater, who stayed in touch over the years, to go up to, he wanted to create an invitational, truly educational experience. So many of the things that students can attend have competition, are rated, and there's a trophy, and there's an element of pressure that takes away from learning environment. This is five invitations, seven high school bands from Maine, New Hampshire, and Maine are selected to come and be part of this, these days. So we would leave roughly, we didn't solidify a time slot because I wanted to first see permission. The time slots go up with the day. We leave around 7:00 AM, travel by bus to University of New Hampshire, and we would be take part in a clinic with Dr. Boyzen, who's the Director of Wind Bands, and he would work with our students on a piece of our choosing that I've actually, I've talked to the kids a little bit about what this might look like should we follow through, understanding I needed permission, and the kids selected a piece they want to work on. So they're really involved, which is a piece I love. And then, so we'd work with Dr. Boyzen at the clinic. We get to hear some of the other high school bands, we kind of got, you get an idea of what other schools are doing. And then, we would get a concert by the university students, so it would make that connection between our students and the college level for those who both want a major in music and simply want a desire to continue to play. And then in the afternoon, we would catch to the clinic with a composer named Bryant Carrick, who's a published composer, the children, if the students get to select a work of his and rehearse it with him. And it's very rare that a student ever has access to the composer of the piece, so he will get to work with them on his writing and their playing, and so it's these two wonderful workshops. And in addition to our students, the university students will play along with them, so they'll get to sit in and have mentor relationships there. And it all culminates in kind of a big performance piece at the university. And then we'd be back the same day, so there's no overnight component or anything like that. And that's just the issue.
Do you know what other towns are participating?
I don't, yet.
Now, do you know, you don't know if there are any from Massachusetts?
There are. I think he tries to do, maybe math, one, two, three, four, five. Two, I believe the goal is two Massachusetts, two Maine, and three New Hampshire. Well, New Hampshire is a better home base to kind of get a sense of, you know, the new religion.
That's great.
Yes.
And how many students, roughly?
So I would make it optional, because it is on a Wednesday, April 29th, so it's a school day. So whenever, I don't like to take students out of school if it's outside their comfort. But there could be seventy-eight students that would travel if they were all to go.
How about two buses?
Yes, two buses.
So, it, I have no objection. I think it's a great, great opportunity for everybody who can participate in the trip, but because it's out of state, it does require a vote.
Mm-hmm. I think it's a great opportunity, too. I'd like to propose that we allow you to take this trip.
Pass for motion?
I made a motion that, that we-
I'll second.
One favor?
Aye. Jane Astino?
I'm Mary McGoldrick.
All right, close your-
And that's it.
Oh.
Ooh.
Uh-oh, stay away.
I just returned the computer. And, on a side note, I had the opportunity the other night to see part of the rehearsal of guys and dolls in the hallways, on the stage, in the cafeteria, wherever the kids were, and I have to tell you, it's going to be very exciting.
December 5th, 6th, and 7th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have a question, Paul?
Yeah.
You've kind of blew by invitation to speak so quickly. Where's technology tonight on the agenda?
It is not on the agenda.
Well, at the last meeting, we discussed, Mrs. McHale sent up this, cause the Blackboard Camp-
The reason why the agenda is a little bit more limited is that Paul was unable to be here, so I asked that we limit the agenda to only things that are going to be necessary, so he'll be back next.
Okay, so, Mrs. McHale sent up her Blackboard Camp, she called it on school committee meeting, and I thought the last school committee, the 99th time, was dedicated to a lot of doors at school, the two cameras at the Osford that were out of 19, and the four cameras that currently work here as today-
Okay, I would ask if you're going to discuss things such as the cameras and security, that does not be done in a public session.
I held off five weeks.
And I understand your concern, but security comes first, so I'm going to ask that to be taken offline. Okay?
When are you going to tell the parents of the children off here that only between the two schools and only six cameras work? The people of this town have the right to know that they-
Once again, if you're going to particularly ask about individual cameras not working, cameras working, how many there are, that's security.
Well, people getting fired about this.
I understand, and that is not part of-
What are you going to do about that, Paul?
That's, that's not part of the public comment, nor is it part of being in a public meeting. Okay? That's security, and that is designed-
Lack of, lack of security is what it is. Lack of security.
If you're going to be insolent, I'd ask you to leave.
Well, maybe we'll both go out here handcuffs. I'm not leaving, Paul.
Well, then I'd ask you to be polite.
Paul, you asked me not to go public with this stuff. I did. I held off all of the newspapers, all the outlets, everything, okay? Now, someone is potentially going to get fired tomorrow. But that's not going to happen, because the whole town is backing her.
Once again, we can't discuss personnel matters as well.
Well-
So, this is a public meeting, this is not-
School committees aren't supposed to do-
If you'd, if you'd like to make this more public, write a letter to the Mariners, see if it gets published. This is not the forum, nor is this legitimate in a public meeting, okay?
I thought we had transparency. I have a question. What is the proper forum?
The proper forum is offline, not in a public meeting. This is a working, public meeting. This is not discussing personnel, individuals-
No, I understand that makes sense.
Personal stuff-
It's not happening here now. I'm just wondering if there is an appropriate outlet perhaps, meeting-
It's typically one-on-one with a, either a member of the school committee, member of the administration, member of the, for example, the police department, but it's not open.
Is that something that you tried to set up, please?
Oh, five weeks, I've been holding on. News outlets?
No, I, I heard you say that. I'm wondering, you trying to set up a phone line or privately?
No, I'm not. I did, I set up a meeting with the police chief, and who, within twenty minutes of hearing about this thing, had an officer at every school-
Dr. Schubert, we need to move on.
Yep, and so I'd like to go on the agenda at this point. Next up is use of facilities.
Yes, so, I know that Mr. DeGeneres had said that he would bring this forward tonight. Unfortunately, Mr. DeGeneres is very, very sick and could not join us, and so he asked this to be revisited. You have in front of you a facilities usage application that was done, well, in October of this year. You can see that there's a letter attached. There is also a set of minutes from November 4th, 2004, ten years ago, at which time the AA was given the opportunity to meet at the Deer Hill School, and they have been consistently, and they continue to do so today. One of the things that Mr. DeGeneres wanted to talk to the committee about is that last January, we had a custodian retire, and so that when those meetings are now taking place on the weekends, there is no custodian present in the building. And so the group has been very good. They meet in the cafeteria, approximately seventy-five of them, but they have been, they've had to, and it's been a necessity, that they actually have to, you know, make sure that the facilities are clean when they leave, that they pick up after themselves, and so, as well as there's nobody with a key. So, Mr. DeGeneres has given one member a key, who will obviously open and close the building at the beginning of the meeting and the close of the meeting, but he just asked the committee, and this is certainly the purview of the committee, he asked the committee to revisit this tonight, and the questions he said is whether we should continue to allow the organization, to allow them to use the school without a custodian. Do we need to hire a custodian for the two hours in view of security? And should we continue to have them use the school at all, or is there another facility in town that would hold that many individuals? And he asked that to be a discussion among you. I have no opinion one way or the other.
Just a quick question. When you refer to "he," you're speaking about Mr. DeGeneres.
Yes.
Okay.
The pronoun "he" is from Mr. DeGeneres, excuse me.
Now, especially in this day and age with, this is not just about alcohol abuse, it's about other drug abuse. I personally support that the school be used in this purpose. We can look into the safest way to do it.
Mm-hmm.
We've had no problems with them for ten years.
Absolutely not.
It's, I think Rick Shea was actually the, I believe, the, the head of the school board at that point, the chair of the school board at the time. And I just think it's, it's really crucial for, not only for the, the social residents, including co-hosted residents, but for, you know, so many different reasons in terms of education and support for substance abuse at any time.
I would just like to say, I concur with everything Helene said. I think just everything that we're reading in the news and so forth, it's, one of the missions of the school is certainly to help and support our young people, and there are, there are not just adults in there, so we would absolutely support this.
Right. And, just one additional comment. And by having it at the schools, it sends a message to our young people that, you know, this is something that the school board supports, and that's really, really important.
I would agree. I think that it's important for them to have a clean, safe place to meet, and I think that it's very important to community health to support this in this way, and I would support having them continue.
Okay, and that is absolutely fine. So then, my next question to the committee is, because we have had no issues in terms of cleanliness, Mr. O'Hare is here tonight, and it's, the facilities are always left in very fine shape. The question is whether the committee would feel it is a necessity to have a custodian on duty during the time period that they are occupying the cafeteria.
Who, I didn't know who you were. Thank you for coming.
So.
Who has the key?
Is it-
Do you want a specific name?
So who is ultimately responsible for the security of the building, is what I'm asking? That's all.
There's one person in the group that has a key, that opens-
And it's consistently the same person?
I presume so. I, I'm assuming it's the same person.
It is, on the rare occasion that that person can't be there, he transfers the key to another member who returns it to him.
Okay.
All over the week.
And somebody keeps track of who has the key?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, then I, I don't have any issues with it at all.
Either do you want-
Yeah, I'd agree. I think it's a very good group. It's serving the purpose of the community, both for the education of students, and it's a phenomenally good community operation that works well to prevent a lot of trouble. I think if we can figure a way to make sure the key gets appropriately handled, that's fine, I mean.
Okay, and, and we can add, oh, I'm sorry.
And the one line that was sent to Mr. DeGeneres from, I guess you, was the idea of hosting a responsible person in the hallway to prevent anyone from going beyond the restroom. That makes sense.
We have group members on a rotating basis that have specific job functions, including making sure that nobody goes beyond the men's and ladies' rooms that are just outside the, at the halls, the settings-
Right, yeah, they're right there.
And that's a good idea.
That the building is empty, you know, when, when we're done.
Right.
Okay.
And just because you've been discussing it, I think it'd be beneficial for everybody to know that, you know, we have new people coming in all the time, and that's, that's the primary purpose of being, and that's how the program works. And more, more of them are younger people. Virtually all of them are duly addicted. Some of them are, but a quarter of them, some of them are practically run by their parents. And a lot, more and more are coming voluntarily. They, you know, they, it's a program of attraction, and we're well versed in dealing with substance abuse other than alcohol. Addiction is a issue.
Right. Okay. That's fine, I, I'm just, you know, I think, I wish Mr. DeGeneres was here longer, but we also didn't want to hold up Mr. O'Hare, O'Hare, who was coming tonight, so that's why I brought it forward. I, I guess there might have been just one time where somebody was left without the key, and so we just have to make sure everybody has a key, or somebody has a key at the end each time. Recently, I was told, the nurse was there on a Sunday by herself, and somebody came into the office looking for assistance because they didn't have a key.
Uh-huh.
Just one instance, in ten years, I don't call that catastrophic by any means, so.
We're very grateful to have the facility to use. It's difficult to find any place on a Sunday morning. A lot of the area meetings are held in churches, church basement, church, you know, function rooms, and they're not available on Sundays. It's difficult.
Mm-hmm.
But this has been terrific for, for us, and it's, it's a very popular, well-attended group. A good success rate.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I ask for a motion to approve the facilities usage application forward? Or ask me to do-
I'll, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Paul, favor?
Aye.
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 Four, nothing, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mark has a question.
Thank you for the words you do.
Um, when I saw facilities on the agenda, I didn't realize it was going to be something so specific, which I think is terrific. I did look at some of the older documentation when facility fees were implemented, going back to 2009, and I just have two questions. One, when they were implemented, the, the goal was that the fees that were collected by the user groups for all of the co-hosted facilities would go back to the maintenance of those facilities, and I'm wondering if there's an accounting of that anywhere to say the athletic rooms use the gym, that money goes to resurface the gym floor, hypothetically, we'll get the example. And if, did it's tracked, and if there's a record of how much has been collected. And then the second thing is, is there, should there be a review of the building utilization fee schedule, and what groups fall into which of the categories, whether there's no fee related, or there's a small fee related, or a large fee related? Because over time, since 2009, groups have changed and walled and have stepped up in different ways, and I think perhaps it might be time to take a look at this again and see what groups belong, if the groups are properly designated. For example, in category one, where there's no, there's no rental charge, both of the school groups, the CEF and the PSL, are not charged, but in category two, all booster groups are charged for use of facilities, and although their donations aren't always on the books because they're direct to the programs, because they're not for coaches or uniforms, which are the two things that get funded through the athletic department, they do make substantial donations. So I'm wondering if perhaps it's time to relook at those and maybe consider that, that some of the booster groups maybe has no rental category. And I don't-
We did that. Finish, that's okay, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just going to say, I, I don't expect an answer tonight. Like I said, I thought when it said facilities, I thought it was a much broader topic.
Right.
But I think it should be on a future agenda.
We did review this not too long ago, maybe within the last-
Two years.
Year and a half.
I think two years.
And most of the groups only pay use of facilities to cover the, the custodial fee. So if, if they're assessed a fee for use of facilities on a Saturday morning, you know, from twelve to two, it is only to cover the cost of the custodians, that's all we charge, and it, because the feeling is that local groups should be able to use the facilities. And also, we discussed it because the custodial fees, the custodians were making a little bit more money now because of contract changes, so we adjusted and gave Mr. DeGeneres the appropriate power, for lack of a better word, to adjust those fees accordingly when the custodial contract does bump up.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're not charging hundreds of dollars for them to come, we're just charging the custodial coverage.
With the youth sports groups, it was five dollars per registration. So the schools would collect, there are three hundred kids playing basketball, the school would collect five dollars ahead of fifteen hundred dollars in fees. So you're saying that doesn't happen anymore?
I don't believe it does, because we-
I'm looking at Mrs. Pescatori, who has to take care of the money, and she would know.
No, we, we still collect, you know, for the, like the basketball booths.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not just, okay.
Is it still five dollars?
And the only other thing that's, I thought it was ten.
Maybe it's ten.
I think it's ten. The only other charge they have is just for the custodian. Yeah, for instance, on Saturday mornings, if we're having Saturday school, Saturday school is charged for the custodian to be there. So not just-
Okay.
So, we try to immediately rate what the boosters are paying, and we do use the money to refinish the gym floors at both Deer Hill and here at the high school. We use it to buy paint for alumni field and for the other fields that are used, so. The money comes in, goes into a separate revolving account, and then it goes, when we pay out of it, it comes out of that. It pays, you know, that revolving account pays for the custodians that work, their, their salaries charged against that revolving account, if they're working overtime. And if bus drivers are doing it, and if we take kids on field trips that are out of town, they also get charged to be covering the bus costs.
All right, thank you.
Good question. Good job. I remember we brought it up a while ago, we went through it, but it was logical then. We had not been charging enough to cover the custodial fees for a few years, so we adjusted it. I think it went from thirty-five dollars an hour to thirty-eight dollars an hour, something, something like that.
So, to help you, Mrs. McGoldrick, Mrs. Conley is sending scores in for you.
Yes.
She said it's zero, zero right now. But just so you know, she was thinking of you.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is the Osgood generator, and so I just wanted to alert the committee that I've sat down and started a conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Last week, as you know, it seems it was longer, but we had, it was two weeks ago, sorry, we had generator failure out on Sawyer Street. I'm sure, Dr. Schubert, you probably suffered the consequences of that. It was tied in simultaneously with the storm, but had nothing to do with the storm. Chief Sylvia explained to me, whether we had had a storm or not, the transformer would have gone anyway. So I was at a conference at the time when I received the call, and trying to get communication with the police, the fire, the town manager was impossible. I wound up coming back to the district, which was absolutely fine, but we met this week to talk about the situation, because one of the matters was that it was 8:15, and the question was, and Osgood was without power? Well, Deer Hill was with the generator, and the question was, do we close school? And I said, you cannot do that to parents at this point, because their arrangements are made for the day. So we need to bring the students in, pull up your blinds, let the light in. As it turned out, the power was already restored to the school at, I believe, five past nine. So it was great that we didn't close school. But nonetheless, I sat down with Bill Quigley and with Bob Sylvia this week, and we had a discussion, and we're coming up with plans as to, should we have another power failure? What we, what will we do, and how will we handle it? Because we're not all present, obviously, at all times. And so we are looking at the configuration of the generators right now. We know the high school is fine, we know Deer Hill is fine, but clearly, Osgood has been something that's been in discussion for years, because they don't have a generator, and we'll be bringing forward more information to you in the coming weeks as to some of our thoughts, but I just want the committee to be aware that when that happened, it allowed us to take a step back and take a look at what's happened thus far, because thankfully, it's not dark in the morning right now. God bless you. It's not dark in the morning, but we still want to make sure that everybody's safe. If it was the middle of the winter and we had no power all day, I would have been very concerned. It was a warm day. But nonetheless, I want the committee to be aware that we are looking at the possibility of how do we have a generator backup Osgood, at the same time, we have generator backup Deer Hill. And so that's something that we are conversing about at this moment.
I think about eight years ago, one of the capital budget generator requests, which was turned down, maybe nine years ago, for the, for the Osgood school. So one option is whether or not an independent generator would be worthwhile, but they're not going to be cheap, because it's going to be, you have to be gas-driven and work in, in yard and a car for it, but it has to be a powerful, a form to run a, you know, pretty good-sized building, so. I think that was the original cost, it was too expensive, it was not put in.
Right, and I met with Mr. Senior today, and we talked about some of the things that we might need to look at for capital for the spring, for the meeting. So we just began that discussion today, we're meeting next week to talk about it. But I felt you should be apprised of that. The next thing on the list is an update on Camp Bourndale. I want the committee to know that we, the first committee meeting took place this afternoon. We met for about ninety minutes. Everybody had an opportunity to discuss where we want to go, and we already have meetings planned for the next two weeks after this. And then, Mrs. Moy and I are sitting down tomorrow, based on what we gathered today, to format what the meeting will look like for the following week, in terms of what our intentions are. So, we're trying to come up with an answer, a definitive answer, prior to the break in December. That's our goal. And we know that's a, a large chunk of information we have to cover, but I just wanted to keep the committee aware of what we're doing. That we have our six parents, five parents were able to make it today, we have two faculty members, we have three principal, the principal from the high school, principal from Deer Hill, and then Mrs. Sandler for the assistant principal, where she covers sixth grade, and then myself. So we all gathered today and started the first meeting.
Quick question. Would it be possible, and maybe it's already happened, for just information, whether it be from Blackboard Connect or through Dr. DeKear, to go out just to the school population, so everyone is aware who the committee members are and how often they're meeting in the timetable?
Yes, that's fine. In fact, Dr. DeKear had to leave early today, so she's not aware of how we ended things, but we deliberately, with intent, set up the next two meetings to make sure we didn't get bogged down with other dates and then have trouble gathering. So we have done that, and we talked about what our mission needs to be for the next meeting, and so that kind of information can certainly get out there.
Okay. I think it's, it'd just be good for the parents that aren't able to be in the loop-
Absolutely.
-to know what's going on.
Absolutely, and we did talk about getting that out as well. The next thing on the agenda is the reading of policy, KI, visitors policy. It is a first read. So, two out of the four of you are part of this policy that covers the lobby guard. We also have, Mrs. Conley put together twelve steps for using the lobby guard. I've asked her to go back and see if she can reduce that number slightly and bring it down to a shorter amount. I had one parent come today and thought that would be great. She came in, she got her sticker, her badge, she walked around, she left, but she didn't realize she had to put it underneath the bar to check out. So, once we're done with this, we'll put those directions up for folks to take a look at. We've had, the secretary there is being taught what to do if the, the sticker should get caught. We had, once that the internet went down and had to be reconnected this week, that was no fault of anybody. Went down for everybody. When it went down, it had to be reset. The secretary called Mr. Benell, and within sixty seconds, it was back up and running. So, this is for you all to take a look at, and the purpose of the policy is to ensure a safe and secure environment in which learning and personal growth can flourish. And while we encourage families and community members to be active part of our educational system, we ask for your cooperation with the following guidelines. And the first is that visitors or observers must check in at the office or with the greeter desk and state the purpose for the visit, provide identification, sign in at the lobby guard system and wear their visitor pass, wait for the office clerk or greeter to contact the appropriate officer classroom to verify that visit, and sign out using the lobby guard system upon departure. So those are the steps, the five pieces that are pertinent for anybody coming into the school moving forward. Then in addition, we ask that the visitors or observers ensure that observations have been scheduled for a mutually convenient time with a clear beginning and ending, so everybody's on the same page there. Establish in advance of the scheduled visit observation the purpose of the visitor observation. Should a student wish to have a guest in school, they must receive permission of one of the administrative staff twenty-four hours in advance of the proposed visit, that is no different than what we've had. All students, guests are expected to follow the standards of behavior of the co-hosted public school district, and understand that the school administration reserves the right to terminate a visit or observation in the event of a disruption in the educational process. The important thing to note is that in the event somebody puts their identification into lobby guard, and it will then, they've worked out arrangements, Mrs. Conley, Mr. Scott, and secretary, they've worked out arrangements that they'll receive a signal if there is a hit on the, the identification. If the person needs to come into the school, they will be escorted. Or not at all, depending on the circumstances, but at least so that you will know.
Do we want to add that to this policy?
Is that more procedure than-
It, it probably is more procedure.
That was my only question about that.
Maybe we set up this and addend it later, if there's considerations, I think it's more, I mean, more procedure, but it can always be added.
Mm-hmm. What do you think? What do you think?
Um, I think you could have a one-liner about it. It doesn't have to be, it could be somewhat open-ended, that, you know, where you have this scenario. That if there's a concern, who's contacted? And you could say, a superintendent designee or whatever, you know, so that could change. It depends on what the.
School administrator.
Exactly. I think a one-sentence type of thing is, is, we'll clarify it somewhat.
I mean, it's covered under the school administration reserves the right to terminate visit observation in the event of disruption in the education process, so you could put it under that.
Yeah, but if there's an issue with the lobby guard, like, you know, a sentence about.
We'd have to reconstruct the second reading of the policy and start over the first reading.
I agree, but we want to get it right.
All right. So, we, we could add a line in. I'll leave it up to, to both Mrs. McGoldrick and Mrs. Steen, whether you want to do that or you want me to do that.
No, we can do that.
Okay.
Mrs. McGoldrick mentioned it, and I do think that one sentence makes sense because people are going to ask, okay, so what do you do if something goes?
Yeah, and I think if it's in our policy, I think that they can then look at the procedures in the building. But I think that if it's clearly stated, I think it needs to be clearly stated in the policy. It doesn't have to be a paragraph, it can just be a one-line.
So, it should live under the visitors' slash observers' must, right?
Yes.
So, we'll just put something in there. All right, I'll do it, just a draft, and I'll forward that.
Okay.
If I could just mention one other thing, there's a typo just on the second line up top. Doesn't say public school, it says P-U-B-L-I-S.
Oh, sorry about that. We will fix that for sure.
And I'll just forward this along, Jean, I'll forward it to you tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dr. Schubert?
Yes.
Mary.
This, um, lobby guard was shipped on six one in two thousand thirteen. So, we paid for year support for four hundred and fifty dollars, and it never really actually worked the whole first year. Saturday, Friday, it didn't work, it was down. So, for a whole year, I tripped over this in the lobby. So, we paid for support for a year, but it never worked. It really has only technically been working two weeks now? Maybe since I raised the issue of yep, yep, first, school meeting five weeks ago? So, say five weeks it's been working. Hasn't still on hooked up to technology five weeks ago. But, so we've spent a whole year, four hundred and fifty dollars on management software updates support, which expired six thirty two thousand fourteen. We still, do we get another year of this? Since it sat out there for a whole year, it never worked.
Well, as I said last time, we are now up and running and we're moving forward from here.
That's not the question.
I, and that's the, but that is the answer I need to give you, Mr. Gillis.
Four ninety-two, two's a mo. That's not what you ask.
I know.
That's the question, that these are subscription-based services, four hundred and fifty dollars a year. Do you know why you pay it?
You know, I'm sorry.
Do you know why you pay that? So, in case you have a problem, that you have remote support. So, it is, I think, of utmost importance that because of the criticality of the issue at hand, that that is renewed.
I am sure that if it needed to be renewed, Mr. Benel would have taken care of all renewals.
Can we check on that?
Yeah.
And put your report back to us.
How many times have we called up for this service? Because in the last year, so it really has only effectively been working for the last five weeks. Friday morning, I was in Antucket for the MIA championship, all these parents are coming to schools, drop off stuff for their children, and the doors were wide open and the lobby, and it's exciting, the lobby guard didn't work. So, I said to Mr. Benel at the front desk, Mr. Benel's in the building, currently working on this, he better be. This, so, so you said it already went down this week again?
It went down for a couple of minutes and Mr. Benel reconnected. When an internet service goes down, Mrs. Gillis, it will go down with it. There's nothing we can do about it.
Well, the internet service was not down on Friday, the lobby guard was down on Friday.
I was not given any of that information. I'm sure it was, but that has not been sent down to my office. So, all I can do is work with what I have.
I just think it's just crazy that we have this big thing sitting here for a year and over a year, really about fifteen, sixteen months, and it didn't work.
But Mrs. Gillis, you've made your point over and over and over again, and we need to work, move on at this point.
Lobby guard up and running.
Mrs. Gillis, we've already talked about the plan among the committee, when the lobby guards will be up and running in the other schools.
This is part of technology to some extent, but it's also part of security. And once again, these are the sorts of things that are not to be discussed in open meetings. If you want to do it offline, I'd gladly talk to you. But, but security is key, and I understand the understanding of getting things running and getting things online and getting things with technology running. But when the concern, whether something is, such as the cameras, we're not going to discuss that for now.
Well, technical lobby.
I understand, but that is involved with security and that frankly, needs to be not in an open discussion. We need to do this not in an open.
Glenn, can we have that discussion Friday?
Give me a call Saturday morning, all right? Gladly sit down. But this is not the place for it, to be discussing security in an open meeting like this. The security of the kids is more important, so.
Well, why am I here then?
So, I, I know, I understand exactly why you're doing it. I understand why you're pushing it, but we cannot give more information than's necessary.
Okay, my thing is, October first, this was brought to the forefront. October second, a very specific email out. So, we're now November fifth. I would think that we would be up and running. Any person would think that it was in the school building, the school building, it's called the three little schools, that we would be up and running.
Mrs. Gillis.
Coming out here five weeks later, I would think we would be up and running, Mrs. Cattalo.
I appreciate your thought, and I thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We're going to continue on.
Can I ask a question, please? Could you please speak to Mr. Benel? And let the committee know when the next lobby guard will be online? And could you also check into the renewal of the lobby guard service contract and check that it has been renewed? Because quite often, when these items lapse, they can be renewed.
Yes, I said I would definitely do that.
Okay, great.
I think Mr. Benel already apprised you about the other two lobby guards in executive session, though.
Okay, I just, I would like to receive an update on that, please.
So, the next meeting, I will plan another executive session. We can do it there. All right.
Next up is the reading of the policy for security cameras.
All right, before we go on with that, the other policy here for the lobby guard. So, I just want to make sure I have the understanding that one of you or both of you will add that additional line and then send it over to us for the next meeting.
I'll put it in. Well, Jean and I will work on that together and send it, we'll send it tomorrow.
Yep, thank you very much. All right, the next thing on the agenda, the next item is the reading of policy ECA, security camera system policy. The reason why this policy is important is because shortly, well, first of all, we know we have cameras in the district, and there's already been well-known, but we also have our new buses that will be arriving soon. They have cameras on them, and we'd like to have the opportunity to use those cameras, so we believe that this is a very timely policy to put into place.
So, just for clarification, will you, you'll be reading from?
You'll actually be, this is the correct one. Mrs. Steen will let me know.
There is a slight correction.
There is a typo?
Yes, the one that you handed out tonight is correct.
Okay. The other one is?
This one.
I ripped that one up because I thought you said the other one. Oh, I have one more. Okay, excellent.
Would you like?
I got one.
No. If you go.
You don't need one change.
Mrs. Cattalo handed it out.
I didn't realize you were coming. Can you do that?
Me neither. I just took medicine.
So, would you like me to read this?
Sure.
Okay. Security camera system policy. One, purpose. The Cohasset School Committee supports the use of video cameras throughout the Cohasset Public School District for the purpose of enhancing school safety and security. Our goals are to promote and foster a safe and secure teaching and learning environment for students and staff and to ensure public safety for community members who visit or use school property. Security camera recordings will be viewable in each building by authorized designees only. Two, general statement of policy. A, signage and notification. One, appropriate signage will be posted at entrances to school buildings and on school buses notifying students, staff, and the general public of the district's use of security cameras. Students and staff will receive additional notification at the beginning of each school year regarding the use of security cameras in schools, on school buses, and on school grounds. Such notification will include, but not be limited to, employee handbooks and student handbooks. Two, signs will be posted in public entryways to the buildings and other conspicuous locations informing persons that the buildings and grounds may be under video surveillance. The posted signs will read, surveillance cameras in use for security purposes. School buses will have a posting of, video surveillance on this bus, in plain sight for all riders to see. B, camera placement. The security camera system is installed in public areas only. These areas include school buses, grounds, athletic areas, exterior exits or entrances to school buildings, and large gathering spaces such as classroom corridors, cafeteria, lobby, and main entries. Two, security cameras will not be utilized in any place where there is an expectation of privacy such as restrooms, changing rooms, private offices, nurses' offices, and locker rooms. C, use of video recordings. One, the superintendent or his/her expressly authorized designee shall oversee video surveillance. Two, the Cohasset Public School's security camera system will be in operation and may be monitored by school personnel throughout the year. Three, in compliance with the law, recorded information will be available for use as necessary by appropriate school officials and/or law enforcement personnel and may be utilized for other purposes at the discretion of the school administration. D, data storage. Item one, all video recordings are stored in a secure place to avoid tampering and ensure confidentiality in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. Recordings will be saved for no less than fourteen days and appropriately destroyed/deleted. Two, information obtained through video surveillance may only be used for disciplinary investigations, security, or other valid purposes. No sound will be monitored or recorded in connection with the video surveillance system. Three, any video recordings used for security purposes on school buses, in school buildings, or on grounds are the sole property of the Cohasset Public Schools. Release for such videos will be made only as permissible pursuant to applicable law and with the permission of a superintendent or his/her designee. And then, there's a legal reference to the U.S. Department of Justice Program's published research report and the Family Educational Right and Privacy Act.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Schubert?
Yeah, it's pretty well thought out. Just the only comment I have is about the maximum time we want to keep up the recordings, but I don't think that's necessary, because we have the minimum.
Well, we discussed that, and some of those limitations are based on the equipment that we have. So, depending on what system we purchase, some of them may allow for thirty days, most of them are fourteen. That's what we found through the other districts that we surveyed for information.
Right, it's pretty standard.
It is pretty standard. I would like it to be longer, but.
I don't think we have the capacity at this time.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what it has to do with.
But that one, one issue could be changed at any point. And Mr. Gillis has a question.
Yeah, Steve, I think you need to rethink that, make it redundant. So, when your storage goes down, your video, your format that you have, if that should fail weeks ago, what stops? So, put that in as a mindset. How do we make that redundant at some point because you may have a police action, child action or whatever, something we probably don't want to talk about happen. But think about that, fourteen days is probably not long enough.
Right.
Buy more storage, it's not that expensive.
Yeah.
Just think about those things.
Thank you. Is there a way that we could perhaps check into extending the storage capacity and what that cost would be? Not that the cost is the be-all and end-all because it's important for safety reasons, but I'm just curious.
Just making a note.
Okay, great.
Okay. May I, I ask, oh, first of all, I'm sorry. So, I will make a check on that and, right, first read, and I will clean up the typos, and I'll bring it back to the committee on the nineteenth of November.
Great, good.
All right. And then, may I ask the committee that before we do the Weebly presentation, is it working?
No, the switch seems to be broken.
Oh, although we might not be, but I wanted to.
Are you trying? I'm sorry, it broke.
I wanted to bring up the CEF, the gift that we have, and maybe change the order because you've been sitting here so patiently, and you're looking out the door so I know.
Sorry, that son's sitting out there looking at me.
Yes, and as we heard, two to nothing we won.
So, I'd ask a motion to change the agenda to move up the gift to more physical terms. Check his name.
I'll second.
All right.
Aye.
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 Okay. So, we have tonight a gift that was presented, it was in your packet from CEF, and perhaps you can come up and talk about it.
We, a couple weeks ago, we got an application for a grant for twenty-five hundred dollars for, to help out with the Guys and Dolls performance that's coming in December. And we wholeheartedly, you know, approved it, and actually, I gave that check to Barbara last week, I believe. But I just wanted to drop off the letter and everything because I knew they needed the, we knew they needed the money to, to call in. So, this is the, that's.
You have a right to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just thought, I was hoping that we would have people listening, but I wanted to remind people of spelling these coming up.
You can remind them. They can actually, if they're listening, they can't see us.
Deer Hill children, third, fourth, and fifth grade, spelling bee is Sunday, November sixteenth, can be signed up online, and our annual campaign just started. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this is from the CEF. Dear Ms. Cattalo, the College and Education Foundation, please to fund the following grant for twenty-five hundred dollars. Twenty-five hundred dollars to help fund the production of Guys and Dolls. This grant will be used for building painting supplies, costumes, costume storage, make a prop, and a piano player for the November production of Guys and Dolls in high school. To this end, we will present a check to the district, twenty-five hundred dollars. Feel free to contact us with any questions. Thank you. From the CEF Grants Committee Chair, Jim Tullis. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we need to accept that?
Yes.
I presume Stephanie already knows, right?
Yes. Stephanie knows.
We already have it.
No, she was here earlier.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would ask for a motion to accept the grant from the CEF for twenty-five hundred dollars for the purpose of funding Guys and Dolls.
I'll make a motion to accept the twenty-five hundred dollar check for Guys and Dolls.
I'll second it.
Call in favor, roll call vote, please.
Please leave. Aye.
Jean, Steen, oh, aye.
Aye. Mary McGoldrick.
Paul Schubert, aye. I'd like to thank him, that's, I know the process that went through was independent of the usual grant process, and it was things that the CEF sometimes can fund independently when something comes up. Again, there are chances where if something comes up from the administration or the teachers or from the district, if it's out of their usual grant cycle, they can sometimes get into certain funds that are not.
That's right. And they have a grant cycle that's in process now that will be coming to a close soon, December? First week in December, I think?
Uh, doesn't come off that.
Yeah, so, and I know we have a number of teachers that have already written grants and moved them forward, so we're very excited about that. CEF met on Monday evening. So, one of the things I wanted to have the opportunity, we're hoping we can get this up. We've been having trouble, Mr. Benel is in the middle of changing over the server setup, and so, our, everybody's email and so forth has been very slow. setup, and so everybody's email and so forth has been very slow, so as a result, this room, which is still waiting for a repair, is the slowest. We're seeing if we can get this up. We want to show you the Weebly pages tonight because we were in early meeting.
So maybe we could move other items?
Yeah, we have one item left, we can talk about from this, my report, absolutely, if you're comfortable. Do you need a vote on that, or you want me just to proceed?
Ask for a motion to change the agenda. Have resignation and forth.
I make a motion to move that.
Second?
I'll second.
All okay?
Aye.
Aye.
So I put in your letter, a letter in your packet, and this is unusual because I don't generally put in resignation letters because most of our resignations occur in June, and that's a typical process during the school year. But because the committee had gone on a cycle and approved this position in the summer and allowed us to start a program at the middle school in the fall, a special program in the fall, I thought it was very important. The individual we hired is very well-equipped, many of the skills that we were looking for, actually kind of surprised we were able to get all the skills we were looking for. And she came, and Jen Wasniski, and she, two months in, her husband has to move back to Ohio, she's newly married, and she had to turn her resignation in, and she will be leaving us in December. We have already posted for the position, Mrs. Conley will already, I believe, is already interviewing or set up to interview the beginning of next week. But I felt in view of the fact that the committee had honored us with the opportunity to hire this individual, I wanted to keep you apprised of what was happening. It's not anything we could have predicted, she herself said it wasn't anything she could predict, but she's newly married, and she doesn't want to wait until the end of the year, understandably. So I wanted you to have that information now, and just let you know that we've posted in our proceeding forward. And I have, I understand according to Mrs. Buchanan, it's a very good candidates. It's unusual during the school year, so. And the answer is, we're on. So what I asked is, Mrs. Demus is here tonight, and she's, we've talked last time about these Weebly pages that our teachers are starting to use. Instead of, I know there's a lot of talk, why don't the teachers use necessarily the pages that are part of School Fusion, but many of our teachers have been participating in technology courses out of Bridgewater State University, and this is one of the classes they took, and in when we all met on the opening day of school, a number of the teachers actually taught this as one of those little mini workshops of which it was bursting at the seams, really. There were lots of people in it, and as a result, we've seen a really regeneration of folks wanting to use those pages, in particular down at the elementary level right now. But I did want to keep the committee apprised of what's happening, so I asked Mrs. Demus if she would come and show a couple of the pages. We won't have you see many, they're lengthy in some cases, but I think, you know, a few minutes to see what our teachers are doing is really helpful, especially because none of you have elementary school children.
The teachers felt that the websites that were allowed to them were not interactive enough, were not thorough enough in community families, so they developed these great three-day sites, and some of them paid for the site themselves because they wanted more space. Part of it is free, they went beyond that, and then Mr. Bonnell and the superintendent and I talked a bit, and managed to extend it to anyone who wanted to create a Weebly. They're very exciting. Our top contender is the principal herself, with a little help from her friend, she is now in a different website with much more interactive, very current newsletters. There are Friday newsletters coming through, and you click on these and see them. So this is the beginning of spearheading at Deer Hill. There are a number of teachers at Deer Hill, the real cool lady groupers were at Osgood. They really went crazy, if I can go back there to them. It's very easy, it's on the website, and it's classroom websites. Start with the teacher's cabinet here, Osgood is, like I said...
Mrs. Yular's website on the...
Mrs. Yular?
Yeah.
Last time's in her office. It's great. Yeah, that's good.
Do we have the password for that one?
Uh, I think we might be able to access it, or your son is in there, she, I'm thinking she now teaches fourth, second? No, she's second grade, yeah. I may need a password, but I think it's in Osgood.
Okay, some of the teachers have passwords for access and some don't, and I can't remember who has and hasn't, we have a list in there.
Right, I don't have time to access them first. She may need, it may be password protected but open to students. I'm going in as a public person, so she's probably safeguarding those. They should have passwords so that maybe the pictures, information does not go out to the public. If we go back. We'll say he loves the website, they were, he found the other day on Thursday, she posted many of the pictures on there, he just, I mean, he's on this every night, he just thinks it's the greatest thing.
That's great.
It's really a huge success. That's good to hear. We have permission from a few people to post them. Mrs. McPhillips, she has a website, can you see it? I'm just trying to maneuver all these because they came all at once, and I say, oh, why? I think I know this.
You know, Mrs. Herb has a movie in hers.
You can also send a teacher message through, it's very interactive. I'm sorry, say again.
Mrs. Herb, I think she has a movie in hers.
Mrs. Herb did a movie with the kids on getting credit, ready for Stanford all set, and it was Get a Good Breakfast, and the kids were singing, and they're holding signs, and from what I hear, they were all in it all night, and I hope they got a good night's of breakfast. We're still looking.
It's cool they're doing this at the...
I'm sorry?
It's cool they're doing this now because in college, that's what, that's how teachers, the professors, and the students interact.
Yes, right. I actually attended a workshop last week on teaching kindergarteners to decode, decode, and it's fascinating.
I'll tell you, that is so important.
Mrs. Holland in third grade is doing some of that kind of information with her group this week, so they've really taken hold to the technology. Thirteen of them are going to be finishing this, the twelve graduate credit hours in January, so they will be our trainers, the trainers, and this is part of their work. They're now doing leadership and workshops and working on how to create various websites and social media. There are weekly updates that we see. Do you remember the, what, the password?
Mrs. McDevitt's.
It's on the, on the sheet, oh, there's...
I gave you those on the, so I gave you that pile.
Do you want me to go get it?
Yeah, I'm gonna get this.
Go look at another one out.
I have such trouble giving all the passwords. Yeah, the teachers, I think there are about twenty-five teachers who have gone in and out of these twelve credit hours, and they have really gone above and beyond. I sat in their first class, this first class of their last course, and it was on leadership and being a leader in the school, how to bring collaborative learning together with peers, how to bring other professionals within their areas together and to initiate change, and how to do that in a more permanent way. And I was thrilled at their interaction, their eagerness, they have gone above and beyond anything I thought they could accomplish. It's very exciting, they are the movement, and when we spoke a couple of years ago, Mr. Bonnell and the superintendent and I said, so the way to really understand technology is we need to bring it to the knowledge before we implement the actual technology, and I think that's where we are, is that's what's making it so exciting.
And another use for all this, I think, too, I mean, there's times when a lot of students are sick during flu season and things like that, you could have a classroom actually going live, you know, where somebody at home can be watching what's going on if they're well enough to just watch it live.
We've had discussions about putting an entire school on Twitter, how there's, there is a school on social that has lost and found on whatever, they go home, come claim my boots, and so it's been great. There are videos and links, this is Mrs. McPhillips. She is, actually she worked with Mrs. Herb one day, and she said, Mrs. Herb came in half hour later and said, I don't care what you're doing, you have to help me do this. So she has a blog, and students can go on the blog, and we can see what she does too, and certainly Mrs. Herb does too. They also have a Wiki, and they have more about second grade. The students actually post a great deal, and they actually create their own videos. I also was in this particular classroom, they run their own survey. I would prefer to read to myself, I prefer doing this, so they actually have a say, and they actually talk about what the outcome is.
Oh, if your sound is up, we don't have speakers tonight.
Right. Yes.
This is Mrs. Birdberry's class. She is fantastic. This is Mrs. McDevitt's.
Sounds like the little boy on Charlie Brown.
She is awesome!
He's so happy now.
This is Mrs. Smith's class. She is wonderful.
I think they studied adjectives.
This is Mrs. Smith's class. She is nice.
She is nice.
The students get more difficult as you go.
This is Mr. Leo's class. She is cool. This is Mrs. Yular's class. She is terrific.
Definitely.
Could you see those desks? You finally get your own desk. In second grade, you do lots of special things, like computer, P, library, music, art, headmanship in second step. You also do lots of reading.
I'm just going to stop this for a time because they have always, and they work as well as a group. There is a video with Mrs. McDevitt, who helps parents help their children work on flu and C and reading, so it's actually an instructional piece as well. There are also videos that some of the teachers have retrieved to do more tutorial, so if a student at home is a bit confused about something that's going on, sometimes the teachers put instructional information on the blog or on a Weaver that students can go in and review what happened in that day. They have done some unbelievable kinds of things. There are some readings on here as well, some of the activities, all the, they're very, very current, and the teachers usually update them at least once a week, and sometimes, in some cases daily, whenever there's something. Mrs. Herb actually, and I don't know if it's here as well, put parts of her book, her reading book in so that parents could see what she had done for her lesson, how she was teaching labeling in a text, so that parents in turn could use that at home in different materials. So it's become a really enriching site where what they had initially were more memos and more parent-friendly than student-friendly, it's really more student-friendly, and they are quite constructive, so it's very exciting. Can we, want to see another one? Or? Do you want to see one more, or have a feeling what we're doing here?
No, I'm fine, I think it's exciting.
I think it's great.
Very exciting, and most of these...
You gonna make it?
The children coding, that just makes me so happy.
They do a little bit in the computer class in third grade, Mrs. O'Brien told me. When I went on the, of course, I became, because it's Angry Birds, that you did coding with me, it's kindergarten, so I can understand it, but Mrs. O'Brien does a little bit of coding in third grade, and what it is, and we talked about futuristically, that we really need to look at that and make it that part of the education.
You need to understand how things work in the background, and when I had a career in Boston, I used to travel throughout the country and do training for other recruiting coordinators, and all summer long, we would go and train people, and one of the consultants insisted that we all learn to code so that we understood the back end of what we were teaching people, and it made it, it opened everything up to us so that we really truly had a good understanding of what went into the process of developing the system and how best to teach our students, and it was a fabulous experience that I still use today.
What I did see in this workshop, and obviously it was kindergarten oriented, kindergarten for youngsters, was that the safety within us, that it is a vulnerable thing, that we have to be very careful with social media. So there are other pieces to the learning and coding and not just, and as valuable as it is to say, you know, this just didn't appear out of the sky and look like this, that there are actual programs that are developed, and how to do that with high school students to be able to do some coding.
Right. Mrs. Martin has a question.
Ellen Mar, sixty-three-year-old pastor road, I think, I think this is terrific, it kind of makes me want to have a child.
You might want to think about that again.
Not really. But one of the frustrations as a parent of a child going through the system, and I understand a lot of this is tied to our website and how antiquated it is, is the fact that you have a great experience with one teacher who provides a lot of information, and then you move to the next grade, and the next year's teacher doesn't, and how do you maintain that continuity? I know you can't make every teacher sign up for Weebly, but is there, is there some incentive, is there some, something you can do, so, you know, the content might change and mature as the child gets older, but is there something where, where a parent knows every year, okay, well, next year, no matter who my kid gets, I'm still going to have this type of, you know, interactive...
Some of this is contractual.
Right.
Right, no, I understand.
Some of this is contractual, we can't...
We can make people want this.
However, that's exactly what's happened at Osgood, like I said, they drank the Kool-Aid. It wasn't like we brought them off to the trough and made them drink. There is a teacher at each grade level that has the excitement, that took this course and went back and sitting with her colleagues said, unbelievable what I do. The pressure is there to join the group, but there's also the support, because Mrs. Dewall, Mrs. Stillman are in this course at kindergarten, Mrs. McDevitt and Mrs. Delio are in second grade, first grade, and Mrs. McPhillips, and some of the other teachers, Mrs. Yular has taken one of these courses, they have the energy and they encourage others. So that's where there's a propensity at Osgood to have many of these websites. At Deer Hill, there's Dr. DeChiaro, who's developed hers, and some of the teachers there have taken this course. It's moving. There are a number at the middle school who have, it's one of these, and I feel very good about this, that it comes from them, and we, if it's forced upon them as a requirement, we would get some very boring kinds of things, sort of like you made me do it, I'll eat it if I have to. I think it's coming from them, and it's exciting, and the technology's coming for them, is available. I think it's a slow-moving trend, but I think you can see it.
You know, I think somebody, it's coming from the kids, too. The kids get, you know, involved with a teacher to get them to do these sorts of things, I think it's incredibly helpful, where they get involved with almost teaching the teacher to get involved.
I think it was a fourth grade class, or third or fourth grade class, and the big discussion among the kids who were using the board was, I use my finger, you use the pen, and they were really discussing with the teacher in the best way to maneuver things on a whiteboard. So you're right, it is coming from them and their knowledge, and so, and it is frustrating.
Right.
Yeah, and in a statement, it is basically in most districts now across the state and the country, teachers are going to be evaluated, of course, and they're going to be evaluated on things like how do they use technology, and that, that's definitely becoming an issue in the whole process. And it's not only in education, it's in medical fields and everything, that you really need to be up on things. It's in psychology, I mean, it's in everything. So if you want to be in the 21st century in almost any field, in particular education, it's really important for teachers to be up on things. And the teachers who have been around for a number of years, it's important they do professional development, just like I do as a psychologist.
What we are hoping is, we know that many of our teachers in the elementary sector are really jumping on a lot of these courses. It's been fewer secondary teachers, but they're beginning to come out and participate as well, so I think you'll see, excuse me, you'll see a slower entry of these kinds of websites, but I think you're going to see them start to emerge, probably it'll take another year.
The other wonderful thing about every site is it has the internet acceptable use policy, but it also has acceptable use of media, and teachers are now teaching that to kids before they go on, so there's that kind of safety kind of thing. This is Mrs. Stillman, they have a lot of kinds of things, they actually download files from the site. There's a blog that, for those kindergarten school on...
I think I gave you the password?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah, I misspoke. It's a homeschool connection, so particularly for first-time schoolers, parents can actually discuss with Mrs. Stillman some of the concerns, some of the issues, rather than send emails back and forth, it's a good little blog and a conversation, and she's very good about doing that, and sometimes the children will head out.
I'll just say, one of the appealing things about doing this, as I've been reading across the country, well, more in the region where there's snow, is, it's important, that teachers who are designing websites like this, districts have found they haven't had to call snow days, because when there's a day and the kids can't come in, they have the kids at home doing their work.
Right.
And so as a result, they haven't had to extend their school year, and that might be a huge incentive.
We also had that same conversation with Apples Mapping today, where teachers can go online from home and have many of the resources there, so that if there's a substitute coming into the classroom, the material is there, and the teacher can send it in. It's just a great interaction. I spoke with someone from Philadelphia last weekend, if In Vision Map is a little bit concerned, there is a video prepared here for kindergarten. of gardens.
And I know there was a conversation last year for teachers who were a little bit, I mean, parents who were overwhelmed by the change.
Well, that doesn't look familiar at all. I can't relate.
I think that might be my children. I think it was my daughter told me I couldn't help her with the look. The fact that I had a master's degree in taught it didn't make any difference.
A little dated, no flip phones.
Yeah.
Some of it's chopbed too.
I think we get it. I think your signal went.
So that, there are all kinds of things.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you for exchanging.
Okay, next up is Ms. Warren.
Yes, and so even though Mr. DeGennaro isn't here, payments must go on, so I hand it over there to Mrs. Stino and I believe you take a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant fifteen dash zero seven Sierra.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant fifteen zero seven S.
I'll second it.
Second. And we'll call vote.
I, Holly.
I, Jean Estino.
I, Mary McGoldrick.
I, Paul Senior. And Communications, anything?
Things are doing well at the senior center.
We just got a mailing in the mail today, but I didn't have time to open it.
Right.
Was I, was there another five hundred thousand raised or given?
I just started a campaign.
Well, we started a campaign because we have, now the Social Service League's pledged, you know, two, two million, and they've collected over a million.
Wow.
So they really want to then get the rest of the money from pledges and from people who are going to donate. So things, things are really going well and the, the Social Service League in the town are reviewing the operating costs and getting the set. And we, you know, hope we can overcome some of the obstacles whenever you do something as large as, as a new senior center. There's a changing of their, of budgets and figuring out things and obviously it's going to cost more to run a senior center than it is in the present little space that is being rented right now. So they're working through that. And I've spoken to various members of the Board of Selectmen and other people, and people are pretty optimistic that things are going to fall in place. It just takes a lot of work and you have to know, everything has to be gone through, so there's no surprises.
I'll be attending the, just one day of the MAPS conference on Friday this week, so I'll be down there for whatever wonderful things I learned at the next meeting.
And I know last night was the CPAC meeting on concussions. I wasn't able to attend, but.
I was not either, given the game.
I was, I understand many, there were many parents there and they weren't necessarily parents of students with special needs. It was the general public who attended and they said it was phenomenal, phenomenal.
And the spelling bee for the CF is nearly sixteen, so don't forget to attend. We're still looking for volunteers for those portions of the, of the bee.
In St. Harbors is still moving ahead about, you know, the drug and alcohol use and working with educational programs. So that group is very active. And, you know, I tell them, they've already gotten some money, some of that money, hopefully they'll get more. There's towns like Situage that have over six hundred thousand dollars in grant money to educate and work with students and community members. So there's no reason why we can't continue to be a major force in this town.
Okay. And is there a reason to go under executive session?
Yes, I think I gave you.
Yeah, I'd ask for a motion to move it to executive session for the purpose to discuss that.
We have one more comment.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I just have a question on communications and I don't know if there's a policy for this or not, but it's frustrating to send the school committee or an administrator an email and not receive a response. I understand you can't deliberate or comment on the content of the email, but an acknowledgement or a phone call to discuss the content or the questions that are being asked would be appreciated. I deal with over, you know, between two and three hundred inbound and outbound emails a day in my job and I acknowledge people who ask the questions, people who look for information. And I think it, it's just, I don't know how many you get from the general public. I know that I've sent one or two myself. And some have been very simple questions and some have been very long detailed, you know, diatribes. And it's frustrating as a parent and taxpayer and someone who obviously has no more children in the system, still cares very much about the system, not to get an answer or a phone call back. And I don't, I don't know, I don't know if you have talked amongst yourselves, like, we're not going to answer, we're not going to respond, or, or whatever, but I strongly encourage all of you, and I wish Mr. Onyebany was here as well, that when someone takes the time to put their thoughts down on paper, to pick up the phone, to call them, say, I can't discuss it with you, but thank you, or call me at this time and we can discuss and I can share with you, just some kind of acknowledgement. Because I don't need to be spending my time doing it, but I do care and I do have questions. And if it's the five of you, or Mrs. Cataldo, or Mrs. Conley, or whomever it is, I think a response. And maybe it is a policy that emails are responded to, phone calls are returned. And if that's all I want to say about that.
No, I, I agree. I usually like to respond by a phone call. Sometimes I take, I spend about four or five phone calls trying to get a person, but I think it's really important, so I try to do that. I look on my regular personal email most often. Sometimes the K through twelve one, I don't check as often as I like, but usually people just call me up. As far as how many times people contact me, I probably have about seven to ten phone calls or, or contacts. And usually I'm just walking through town and people approach me. And sometimes I'll say, well, do you want to go for tea or French memories or sit down and we talk? Or sometimes just in the dairy aisles of supermarket and we pull aside and we talk about an issue. To me, if you're a public office person, you know, unless you're really in a challenging situation, it's really important to be as available as possible. So I try to be flexible, especially when, when I'm bopping around town.
But we don't cross paths.
Right. I, I think it's real important to respond as much as possible and I try to do that.
So are you, are you saying we should use your personal email because you don't?
No, I do check on K through twelve, but I also have people calling me up. Usually the best way to get me is to just leave a message, a phone message. That's what Mrs. McPhillies has done and that works really well because I like to know what's going on. We had some long conversations, which I thought were really helpful. So yeah, if you call me up, that's the best way, because I do probably get about a hundred and fifty emails a day between my various organizations. So I really encourage, in terms of my school board role, to call me, especially on either line, my six nine two five number, which is the public line, or my professional line. I answer both of them or I call back.
Okay. That's great, thank you. So you're, so what I'm hearing then is after, after myself or some other parent initiates communication, you would prefer for us to then follow up with you?
As soon as you initiate a conversation, especially by phone call, I always call back.
Okay.
I don't remember ever not calling back. But sometimes I do, don't respond as quickly to the K through twelve because that's been, I've been on the school board for six years and I got in the habit of just going through the, the big red one. So sometimes I'm out of the habit of just responding to K through twelve. Because there's very few that come through just through that. Most of them come through the phone or my private one, which is not so private, it's all over the state actually, the big red eighty-four, eighty-seven. So that's the one that I, when people hit that one, that I respond pretty much immediately to that one. K through twelve, I'm just so not used to doing it because it's more, this is the last couple of years, especially when we set, set it up with a tech person. He was really good, he did it on my iPhone, but I just don't always hit it because it, it's, I'm responding to two different email folder type of things. So I prefer if people, if for some reason I don't respond via email, they just call either one of my phones and they'll hit for me within twenty-four hours, unless I'm like in Catagonia or out, out of the country.
And I also respond, and if someone responds, if someone contacts me in writing, I always acknowledge in writing. I think not to do that is rude and that's just the way I was raised. If somebody asks me a question, I give them an answer. If I, something that I can't discuss, I will certainly tell the person that I really can't discuss this because it's something that we need to discuss in, in executive session. We can't deliberate behind the scenes, so we don't speak unless we are in a public meeting or an executive session. We're not, I mean, we can obviously talk to each other, but we can't. The thought is that if Dr. Leib calls me and says, did you see, and I think, and then I mention to Mrs. McGoldrick, oh, Dr. Leib called me and said blah, 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 then we violated the law.
Right, yeah, I understand.
So the, the, the appropriate thing to do in that case would be to ask the chairperson, who's Mr. Onyebany, to put it on the agenda either for the public session or the executive session and we can discuss it then.
Right.
But again, you know, I always respond either in writing or with a phone call.
And one more comment, if I see that a couple of the other school board members have responded to somebody who sent an email out to all of us, sometimes I'm less likely to respond because I feel like somebody from the school board has already responded. But when, when I was chair of the school board for two years, I responded to everything. I didn't assume that anybody else was going, going to respond because I felt as a chair, then it was my responsibility to respond to everything. But now when Mr. Onyebany being chair or somebody else responds and I feel that the board has attended to that person's needs by responding, sometimes I'm less likely to respond on top of that. But I know, I do think if people want to hear from me directly, if for some reason I don't respond, just call me.
Can I comment on that though? I'm probably jinxing myself, but I have been the one person on this school committee who seems to always have their K-12 email work. At various points in time, they've gone down. So if you don't hear from somebody and you're expecting that you will get a response, just drop us another line and say, did you get my email? And we, I'm sure that we will always say, yes, I did, I read it, thank you very much. That's all we have to say, to, to be polite.
So if you have an email and you have specific questions, then, then that really should be a phone call, is what you're doing?
No, I can, no, I can, sometimes I answer in person.
Well, for me, it depends. Each of us are different.
It does, of course, okay, so.
I like, I like to respond, talking to the person because sometimes in email, there's misunderstandings and I don't get the full nature of the question sometimes in one line. And when you talk, being a psychologist in particular, I ask better questions on a phone and then I give them, give them a more well-thought-out response, as they deserve it. So I just think that there's more that can get accomplished on a phone response because then you can really tease out what the person is asking versus one-line email, which can be confusing.
Yeah, I do my best to respond to all the emails or phone calls, but often as I'll be in the middle of work and I won't be able to physically do that. So if I'm on call, you may not get a call back from me or an email back for twenty-four hours, for example, so I may be tied up, but I will do my best to respond to all acknowledged emails that are sent here totally. Yes?
I was just speaking with Mr. Vannell. I guess there is no policy for guest access here in the building. And he said school committee has to put forth policies that we could, tonight I could have brought Jack's website up for his school's class, but I can't get on it, I can't get it. When I'm doing college search, guidance offices, I brought on my iPad and I can't get on. So Mr. Vannell has said the past, the last couple of years, I don't know why it hasn't happened, is that school committee has to set forth the policies that we have guest access here in the building.
You speed back to the internet?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So I guess we need to figure that out.
You're not ready to go there yet until we have enough capacity though? That's the reason why.
I've crashed before.
And here though, you can go on, I can see it cruising down, yeah.
I mean, one of the problems is the ability to access a lot of devices and it crashes the system, at least in the past. There just wasn't enough bandwidth.
Yeah, there aren't, there aren't as many.
Technology available that was able to support it.
There aren't as many visitors to this school, but for example, you know what it's like at Osgood and Deer Hill when there's an event. If everyone was on their iPhone trying to post a video of the, you know, the event that they're at, then the whole system could come down. So that's, it's a capacity issue.
You're on your phone and you're using your own.
Yeah, the phone was probably not a good idea, but if you're trying to use, use the wireless.
Now up here, I did find, you know, as through the college search, sitting there with my son who graduated, doing this, and just things, sitting there with Mr. McGowan. It would have been, I brought my phone, but I couldn't do anything.
Uh-huh.
It was just redundant. He had to kind of write everything down, some of our ideas, you know, I had to like hang over his shoulder, see what he was doing. It was a little bit redundant to kind of go through, we were going through the different school rules and whatever else. So it would have, it would have benefited greatly to have that.
You know, one option may be, certain localities may have a guest access such as, you know, the guidance department for example, or somewhere else. The trouble is if it expands, we've had problems with that, just sheer volume.
Can I ask a question? Do you know, Mrs. Cataldo, virtual high school moved to the guidance office, right? So there should be computers in there that potentially could be used by parents if you were in there doing a college search. So I would think that if you made arrangements ahead of time, so that you knew when kids weren't on the computers for virtual high school, then maybe you would be able to access the internet through the school system, through a school computer, with assistance of the guidance counselor. Until, until we figure out the rest of the logistics.
Because I would be hoping to bookmark, you know, bookmark my top, you know, our topics, our schools, our information and I could have it, like at least I could have run it back in twenty seconds.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that makes sense that you would want to do that because you want to be able to go and refer back to it.
Yes.
But at least in the interim until all of these little glitchy things are worked out.
Even when we were doing the Navions with him, I couldn't even get on, I couldn't even get on the site, you know, so he's on the site, I keep going to his site, you know, so when you're there, it's just, you're just kind of sitting there over your shoulder.
Uh-huh. Which is a pain in the neck.
Right, we're just not there yet. We're working on it, but we're not ready.
I think that's a great idea though, just to check with Mrs. Creighton and that.
Yeah, check and see when the virtual high school classes are not.
Yeah.
And maybe make your appointments with guidance at that time so that you can actually be on a computer in the guidance office.
I think it's guidance and then, there's a couple of rooms there though, I've met in the past with Mr. Hogan and a couple, like we had a couple of other meetings.
There's some conference rooms adjacent to that.
Right.
Conference rooms, yeah, because that would have been beneficial also to jot down.
I've experienced the same frustration and I'm on a school committee, sometimes in this room, I can connect, although it has been better lately, but.
I have one more comment slash question. A couple of weeks ago, I was reading the NEOS report of the high school and there were several recommendations that were posted and I'm wondering if there's been a progress report on accomplishing or attacking those recommendations and if not, can it be something that's put on a future agenda to see, you know, this is where they said, and I, I know we don't agree with everything that they said because it's only their recommendations and not really just, you know, thinking about, you know, getting the boiler permit or inspection sticker or the elevator sticker, talking more about some of their observations about the classroom and what goes on in the culture of the high school. And I think it would be good to revisit that and see, that's where they said we were and where are we now? And I don't know if there's been any updates to the, to that NEOS report.
So we have to report out every certain number of months or that something comes in and Carolyn, I don't fill it out, when I say we, I mean the district, but Carolyn Conley's responsible, so she's filled out paperwork and I can have her come and, and talk about what she's been submitting, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, well, no, I just think there were some interesting callouts. Like the callout about the fact that the high achieving students are really well attended to, for lack of a better expression, that, that is what, how it was stated. And that the, the students at the bottom end, you know, the IEPs, the five of fours are very well attended to and that the vast.
and that the vast majority of the college prep kids don't feel the same, um, kind of... So I'm just wondering, was that cultural observation discussed, addressed, you know? That's what I'm looking for.
Right, so, but, in all honesty, rather than my making, you know, coming back with secondhand information, I think all of us would be better served to have Carolyn Conley come and do the presentation herself.
That'd be great, thank you.
I'll talk to her.
Can we have Carolyn come, because there's a lot of things in that report that were points out that we have to fix? Could that, could she come so that we can ask those questions?
Yeah, that's why I said I'll ask her to come and, and address what she's...
Well, some of these questions are on a security nature.
Certain things she'll be able to answer, to you, certain things she won't.
Did you, as school committee, look at, read that report?
Yes.
The NIOSC report?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Who presented it?
Did you see any glaring problems with that report?
Not all the information was correct? That's what we've recognized.
We discussed it.
Well, some of the information was correct and, and when we go back to it, the security information was correct.
I can't comment on that, I'm sorry.
So when can we comment on the security? Because I'd really like to comment on it. So I'm not going to be with you, Mr. Shubh, Dr. Shubh, I'm going to be with all of them, and he's the chair, and we're going to get to that one. So should I bring police chief, you know, should I bring Bobby Sillier in Saturday morning? Should I bring Will, you know, Mr., um, Police Chief Quigley?
If, if you'd like to speak to them, feel free to.
Well, I want to get to the bottom of it. It's five weeks later.
Then speak to them. That certainly would be, they'll give you far more information than, than what is available to you.
I want to be, we could be able to all the parents, too.
Well, that may not be an option. There's certain security measures that we are not allowed to divulge.
But you should be able to tell us when everything's up and running. It's only fair.
Um, if, if you've ever been in a situation where your security is at risk and it depends on...
My child's, my child's security is at risk.
Well, then you should understand that in situations where you need to have those who are running the security, um, not divulge information of what to do in the case of an emergency, what is running, what cameras are working, who might be armed, who is not armed, all of those things. You tend to have, you tend to have more respect for the security in that case. So I, I think that you have to be cautious when divulging information about security in the public.
So I'm going to, I'm going to go back here and say, next year, the day before, school opens. So there was a, and there was a check of the cafeteria, it passed. There was a check, I assume, it passed, cafeteria opened. There was, but the, the...
Okay, I, I think probably most of this should be discussed outside of this. Clearly, there, there are issues that you have that need to be discussed outside of here.
Competent, security issues, competent leaders. And you're not doing it.
Okay, I guess I'm not a competent leader, so...
No, you are the board that oversees this and do your job.
I'm doing my job, don't worry. Okay, thank you for your comments.
The other one up there that's asking, asking any questions and asking and roving is, is, and has been deemed aggressive at times is Mrs. Estino.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
You want us to come here, you want us to participate, we write these letters to you, get nothing back. We sit here at the same meeting, same crowd, we're going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. It's five weeks later. We should have a hundred percent security.
Yeah, it's a school, it's not a prison.
It's three buildings.
Mrs. Gillis, we've already had this discussion.
Mrs. Catalo, you should resign.
Again, I would ask you to be civil and you're clearly not, so thank you for leaving.
No, I just would like every kid in this town to be safe.
Okay.
And you're not doing it. You're not.
Okay, thank you.
That NIS report, reported that the cameras didn't work, didn't it? You all sat there ready and no one did anything about it.
So I guess there is a reason to go into executive session.
Yes, I think I gave it to you.
So I would ask for a motion to, uh, executive session.
Oh, you have a question, Paul?
Oh, sorry.
Just a very basic question. Where is the, is there...
If you could identify yourself again.
Is there a policy? Oh, I'm sorry. Bridge, Sylvia, four four five Eighth Street. I served for the school committee for six years, however. What, where is the, uh, is the policy manual available as, at the library or online?
Online.
It is online.
Right, online.
Do you go to the school department?
If you go to, yes, if you go to the school department, uh, right along the left bar, you'll see school committee and below, you'll see online forms and so forth, it's right in there.
The web, the web address is www.cohassetktwelve.org. And there is a series of blue buttons down the side. If you click on the school committee button, you, you'll have the opportunity to look at them. There are instructions for using the manual also.
Well...
Who did on the security answer?
I, I've been on the wrong end of a rifle a few times and don't know, you know. Um, if I could ask for...
Bad reference. Sorry.
Well, I have.
Have to say it.
I have, so I'm sorry, that, I understand security and I've been in situations I would rather not be, put that way. Um, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting or a detrimental effective bargaining or litigation position of the public body, the committee.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Call in favor, roll call vote, please.
I, Helen Lee.
I, Jean Estino.
I, Paul Seale.
I'm Mary McGoldrick.
Uh, for the sole purpose of coming out into regular session and...
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just need one minute to get over tonight.